We are back in session. Our next candidate is here. Please.
Oh, I thought you were going to do it.
That's good, that's okay.
Dr. Randy Lea-Pa. Who will do that? April 24th.
Somebody before.
Yes. Well, welcome back. Thank you for joining us today. So, we have about 14 questions. You should have received them ahead of time. And the reason we are doing less questions is so that we have time at the end that board members can ask questions. And the way that they will do that is each board member has a note card in front of them, and they can write their questions down. At the end, they'll pass them into Marilyn, who will shuffle them, and then we'll get as many of them in as we can at the end. So, with that, we can jump right into the first question, which is, according to the nation's report card, Michigan continues to lag behind other states. What changes must the state make to reverse this trend and compete with states such as Massachusetts? How can this be accomplished in a local-controlled state such as Michigan?
Well, first of all, just thank you for allowing me to be here today. This is very exciting for me, and I'm honored and humbled to be here, and excited to spend some time with you and talk a little bit more about education here in the state of Michigan. I really think the first two questions that you've outlined are the crux of really the work that needs to happen in Michigan over the next several years. And so, it really outlines where we're at, what are our biggest challenges. And so, I appreciate being able to spend some time in those right up front because I think they're very, very important. And I think it ties into the question that Board Member Pugh asked last time, what is the purpose of public education? And so, when we think about the purpose of public education, it is the great equalizer. It is the vehicle that allows everybody to have the opportunity to be successful in our country. And so, knowing that, knowing that that is the ultimate opportunity that we have through an education system, it's a gigantic responsibility, and what are we doing with that? And I think we have to be honest with ourselves that while there are great things going on in school districts and schools and classrooms across our state, when we compare ourselves to others, we have work to do. And we need to put together a plan to address where we're at in the state of Michigan right now. And so, as we look at that, and I really appreciate also in the first two questions, you talked about the fact that we're a local-controlled state. So, what does that mean to us? How does that impact the work of the State Board of Education, the State Superintendent, the Michigan Department of Education? And I think it really helps us to focus on what we can do, and it comes down to policies, and it comes down to a value add for local school districts. There are about 50,000-plus classrooms in the state of Michigan. And so, we are not going to be there every single day. The State Superintendent is not going to be there every single day. Staff members from the department are not going to be there every single day. And so, what can we do? We can work on systems. And so, I think we have an opportunity to evaluate where our systems are here in the state of Michigan and what we need to do to improve them. And so, when I think about those systems, I think about the work of Michael Follin. Some of you may be familiar with his work. It really talks about building capacity in schools and among your educators in classrooms in order to improve education. And he talks about doing that in a variety of different ways, but it really has to do with teachers working together, doing collective inquiry. I shared with you research from John Hattie last time that highlighted that that is the single most impactful thing that we can do, is to have a qualified and well-trained teacher in front of kids in classrooms. And what we know by that research also is that that impacts, when we think about question number two, it impacts our poorest communities even more. Classrooms with students who are economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, ELL learners, those students benefit even greater from having a high-quality teacher in their classroom. And that really is the systems that they talk about. So, not punitive systems, not accountability systems that look at individuals, but really accountability systems that look at the system themselves. And so, the work of Follin really is, what are we doing to have teachers working together, principals working together, learning from each other, growing together to improve their craft? And it has shown to work. And I would just highlight that in Ontario, which isn't too far from where I'm at, when I'm in downtown Detroit, I literally can see it from across the river, and the work that they've done in Ontario over the same period of time that we've seen some stagnation here in Michigan has been rather impressive. They have seen over a 20% growth in their reading scores. They've seen a 16% growth in their overall graduation rates. And it really is because what they focused on is the work of that teacher, that principal, the collaborative work in those schools to improve their craft. That's what they've done to address how to improve their schools. It's a roadmap for us. And so, when we think about systems, those types of systems to support that kind of work is what shows the greatest difference. I talked about that, I know, a lot last time, but it really is, what are we doing to make sure that there is a quality teacher in every classroom in front of kids, trained, and having the resources that they need to do the job? If it's into the top 10-10, if it's into the work of the School Finance Research Collaborative, which in my opinion is the single biggest policy opportunity in my lifetime, at least in my career here in Michigan. And we've seen a lot of policy changes in the state of Michigan over that period of time. I started in the 80s when it was a nation at risk, and we worked on school improvement, went into Proposal A and changing the way that we funded schools, going into policies around choice, charters, opportunities for students in our state, accountability measures, no child left behind. Those are the things that we've been working through over time. And I think we have an opportunity to look at some of these other systems that have worked in other places, and really, the research is there. We've got it done. Top 10-10, the SFRC work, it is there, and it provides a roadmap for us to move this work forward. And so, I think what we need to do is build systems around that work and make sure that we're staying focused. The other thing I would mention in Ontario with their success, what did they do? Limited goals. They really identified a handful of things that they were going to work on. Again, teacher collaborative, teacher inquiry on a collaborative basis. They collected data on a regular basis, ongoing, but they used it to address systems, and it really did lead to improved teachers in classrooms. We'll talk, I know, a little bit later on about getting teachers into classrooms and what are we going to do to attract and retain teachers, so I'll save that for a little later. But those are the components for us to change the trajectory here in Michigan. It's right here for us. We have the research. We do not need to look any further. It's all here for us. We know what to do. We just have to start prioritizing, picking a few items, and working together to get it done.
Morning?
Yep.
Good morning. So, I have question number two. What have you done in your current or prior roles to choose achievement gaps, to close achievement gaps? As Michigan State Superintendent, what policies would you recommend implementing that will help close these gaps? Again, keeping in mind Michigan is a local-controlled state.
Yes. And again, very, very important question. If we're going to move on, number one, we have to address achievement gaps in order to show the growth that we should be doing and very honestly doing right by our kids. I mean, let's get down to the bottom line here of what we really need to be doing. I'll talk about a local school district first. I was a Superintendent of Livonia for 12 years. People probably have a perception of what the school district in Livonia looks like. What I can tell you is that in the southeast quadrant, we were broken in quadrants. We had a southeast quadrant, southwest quadrant, and then northern quadrant, or not quadrant, but triad, we called them, three. And so, in our southeast quadrant, our triad, we had a certain level of poverty in a couple of our schools that were much more significant than other areas. And then, in our southwest quadrant, we had a Section 8 housing development. And so, we had a lot of students that were from African-American families actually coming from Detroit. And they were coming, they didn't have Section 8 housing opportunities in Detroit, so they would come out to Westland, which was a part of our school district. And so, we actually had one of our elementary schools that had a majority of their students that were minority. And so, we had achievement gaps, and so, we had to address those. And so, what did we do? We did a variety of things that I think was based on best research and best practice. First and foremost, working to assure that we did differentiated staffing, and so, that's that resource allocation piece. So, we did differentiated staffing, both for our class size and for our attendance staff at our schools that were lower achieving and had higher areas of poor students. We also would put into place very strong principles in those schools, and so, that's a choice that we had to make. And we made sure that there are very strong principles in those elementary schools to make sure that they had the very best opportunity that they had to be successful. We also put in a variety of different teaching methods and practices to make sure that students were really being looked at for themselves. And so, it's about looking at every individual student, and it's the multi-tiered systems of support work in a generic sense, but it really is sitting down and taking a look at every single student, getting to know who they are, what their needs are. We did multiple assessments during the year to make sure that we had good data in regards to where their strengths and their weaknesses were, and we built around interventions to assure that they had the support that they needed to get them back up to grade level. And so, in our southwest quadrant with Section 8 housing facility, they had a lot of transgency. And so, that was a big challenge for us. It was a big challenge for the staff. We literally, in that building, would see half the students that started the year would not be there at the end of the year, and yet, the enrollment was the same because we had new students that were coming in. And so, it's about getting to know each one of those students, meeting them where their needs are at, and even if that didn't always show up in a state assessment, our goal is to make sure that this student was achieving a year's worth or better than a year's worth of growth, depending on where they were at in their learning every single year. And so, we were very active and very involved at the local level to address those learning needs and achievement gaps that we saw. We had focus schools. We were able to get those focus schools off the focus school list over time, and it's because of the resources and the effort that we put in in those schools. Now, at the county level, it's a lot different. I see the county level much more like the State Board and the state Michigan Department of Education. We don't have direct control over individual schools. We're a resource. We're a value add to those local school districts. And so, the work that we do is really identifying where they're at and what their needs are and trying to fill those gaps for those school districts, especially our smaller school systems, because they just don't have the resources. I mean, these small school systems, they have a superintendent, and if they're lucky, they have a curriculum director and a business manager. That's it. They don't have a curriculum department. They don't have a learning consultant specialist in reading and in math. And so, that's a gap that we can fill and the state of Michigan can also fill as we think about moving forward. But let me just paint a little picture for you of where Wayne County was at when I became the superintendent. And for me, it was an opportunity really just to impact more students. I mean, why would I leave Livonia? I was a superintendent there for 12 years. It was a great career, a great community, but I wanted to do better. I thought we could do more for more kids, and that's why I ended up at Wayne Rees-Ah. And when I started there, we had our largest school system under emergency management. I think they were on their either fifth or sixth emergency manager when I started there. We have 33 school districts. I believe it was 23 brand-new superintendents within a year of me either, just before or just after I had started. So, we had 23 new superintendents. We had multiple priority and focus schools that were identified in Wayne County. We had not just Detroit, but a variety of our school districts that were facing financial difficulties. They were either in deficit or trying to get out of deficit or teetering on that 5% goal that they have in regards to having an appropriate level of resources, fund balance to continue to be solvent. And so, we had some significant challenges. Fortunately, Wayne Rees-Ah is an outstanding organization with really talented people. So, I had an opportunity to walk in to a place that really had educational experts and could provide support. And so, what did we do? One of the first things we did was we provided a system of support for our new superintendents. And so, we actually have someone on staff, and I credit my predecessor for bringing him on, a former superintendent, and he would work with school systems or school superintendents and boards of education in regards to, how do we do this governance work? How do we set goals? How do we identify what the most important things in our schools are to work on? So, we provided that support. We passed a regional enhancement millage. That brought in about, it brings in about $75 million a year. It'll do so for six years. There was a significant ask, two mills at the same point in time. There's a transportation millage on, but we worked our tails off, and we got that passed for our kids, almost $370 per student. And as I would tell our local superintendents, there's a lot of things I can do for you, but bringing in the resources that $370 per student can do is one of the biggest things that I can do to support you. And so, we passed that, and then it was, okay, we've got a little bit of stability now. We've been at this work. What are we doing to improve student achievement? And so, we focused on a lot of different activities internally in regards to how we're doing that. We created, because we have the resources to do this, we have ELA experts, we have math experts, we have science experts, we have assessment experts, we have school improvement experts, we have culture and climate experts. And so, rather than they all doing their work separately in these local school districts, what we did, especially in our school districts that were struggling the most, what we did is we actually would set up a team. It was called the District Study Team, we called it. And of course, the local school district had to be interested in us working with them on that, but we would send the SWAT team in to go in and really do a comprehensive needs assessment with them to say, okay, where are our strengths and where are our weaknesses? And so, I can think of the very first school district that we did this in, and they have a significant EL population in their school district. And while they had a special education director, they did not have an EL director, and they had more students identified EL than they did special education. And so, we said, you probably need someone to lead this work in your school district. It's that kind of, you know, a separate set of eyes coming in to sit down with them and say, okay, well, where are your gaps? What do you need to do? What kind of support can we provide? That really started to help some of these school districts to address the issues of being a focus or a priority school. In that same school district, their biggest need was curriculum. They did not have an aligned curriculum in place, you know, step one. And so, that was what we did. We got in with them. We said, okay, we're going to do this with you, and we're going to sit down, and we're going to develop a curriculum. We started with reading. And so, it's that kind of work that that District Study Team can do. I mentioned also the process that we use because we have limited resources to make sure that our communities that had the highest need were being addressed. And so, what we did is we created almost our own little triangle of multi-tiered systems of support internally to where we said, okay, well, every school system in Wayne County will get a certain level of core support, we called it. But if you're a school district that was identified somehow through the state as needing additional support, a priority school, focus school, now it's comprehensive needs, targeted school, if you have some kind of designation, you're going to receive supplemental services from us. And then, for those school districts that are the partnership districts, and we have three school districts that are partnership districts, and our largest district, Detroit, has 50 schools that are partnership schools. And so, that's a whole different project for us in regards to how we support that. But there are intensive support school districts, and they get the vast, they get even more support as it relates to how we're working with them on curriculum instruction in their schools. So, from an achievement gap standpoint, we had to get, you know, it's sort of, you have to crawl before you walk, you have to walk before you run. And really, what we did is we made sure to get some stability within our school districts, make sure they were standing up, make sure that they were ready to move, and then we really started to hit this focus on instruction and what we can do to support that. And through that process, we have built significant partnerships throughout Wayne County. There's not an organization in Wayne County that I wouldn't be in, someone in contact with or involved with, whether it was the Coalition for Detroit's Children, whether it's the work that the Skilman Foundation does, whether it's the support that's provided through the mayor's office. You know, we were very actively involved in the Randolph CTE Project in Detroit. Dr. Vidi and I talk on a pretty consistent basis on what we can do to support them. Our support for Detroit looks a lot different today than it did four years ago. When they were under emergency management, I literally took our chief academic officer, who had done a lot of work in Detroit, and I said, she's yours. Whatever you need her for, you can have her. And they had a lot of structural issues that they were addressing, and they, you know, the focus wasn't curriculum at that point in time. Curriculum instruction was not their focus. Their focus was survival and what are we doing to balance the budget? And so, that changed significantly when Dr. Vidi came in. He is a sharp guy. I know I shared that with you last time. His top-line assistants are as good instruction people as I've ever had the opportunity to talk to. And so, now we're in the, now we're really about, okay, well, what are we doing to support you? Where are your holes? Because you've got the game plan in place. And so, that's what this whole process is about, from a system standpoint, from a county or from the Michigan Department of Education, right? We can't be in 50,000 classrooms, but we can make sure that there are systems in place and we're meeting individual school districts where they're at. That's what we can do to make sure that our school districts are moving forward and closing achievement gaps. We got the vast majority of our schools off the focus school lists at that point in time, and most of our schools that were off the priority list. Not only does that mean that they're working on achievement gaps, but I mean, you know what that means in a community. In a community that has that designation, I mean, it's a celebration. It is a celebration when those school systems are able to say, you know, we are no longer on that designated list by the state. We've shown the progress that we need to show. Now, it's about partnership districts. Our two initial partnership districts, Detroit and River Rouge, had their 18-month benchmarks. Michigan Department of Education, in both cases, said that they are on target to meet their 36-month goals, and we've got next round, we've got more schools coming on that we'll be at the 18-month benchmark with starting next fall. So, we're proud of the progress that we're seeing as it relates to instruction. You know, I would be lying if I wouldn't say that as we look at other measurements, and we do, how we compare to other counties, how we compare to the state averages, I would be remiss to say that we're at where we need to be at. But we need to crawl before we can walk, and we need to walk before we can run, and we've got that foundation in place now. And between that work and the work that we're doing with now our superintendents, they have a literacy group that's going, there's some good things that are going on, and we're making progress in student achievement.
Okay. Question three. Michigan's student enrollment has been steadily declining for over a decade, and recent predictions suggest that this decline will continue for years. What does Michigan need to do to adjust to this decline?
So, as far as the state of Michigan, I'll just, we need good roads, we need good schools, we need good jobs, and so, those things will bring people back into our state, I think, for sure. And not all those things are on the plate of the State Board of Education. Our responsibility is, how do our schools manage this? How do we as a system manage this, and how do our schools manage this? And so, I would break that down into three different components as it relates to how we manage that from a school basis. The enrollment decline issue is a killer for school district budgets, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through the conversation today. But that is the killer for local school districts. If you're, you know, when I was in Livonia, I would say if I lost one student in every school district, it was $275,000, and I still had to have a principal, and so, I had to turn the lights on. We had 800 classrooms. 800 classrooms, that was $6 million. What can we do to cut our costs? That's the issue with declining enrollment for every single school district in the state. And so, I think as we look at the formula in regards to how we fund school systems, for us to have a safe way to manage that decline in enrollment, we have to have some type of system that will allow that those fixed costs will still be covered in our organizations while they're going through that enrollment decline. This is, you know, I mean, this is based on live bursts across the state of Michigan. This isn't, you know, I mean, it's not, you know, the economy's booming again, you know, traffic's pretty heavy now when you go back driving in downtown. People have jobs, unemployment's much lower than it was 10 years ago. And so, some of those issues have been addressed, but if you have fewer kindergarteners than you do seniors, you're going to have enrollment decline, and we have to manage that. That is the most important thing for local school districts. If they can get some help in addressing the declining enrollment issue from a budget standpoint, they're going to be able to maintain services for their kids. Otherwise, it's always, what are we doing? What are we doing to just to balance the budget? That's number one. Also, there's a scale opportunity, I think, here for us to support local school districts. And so, when I think about Taylor, think about the Taylor Public School Systems, I remember when they had over 13,000 students. They have about 5,000 now. Pontiac was bigger than Taylor. Pontiac was larger than Taylor. They're 4,000 or 5,000 students now. And so, they've had to manage that decline in the size of their organizations, so they don't have curriculum departments anymore. They do not have the kind of special education departments that they once had. That's all been, that's all been squeezed over the many years. And so, we can fill those gaps. That is one thing we can do, and it doesn't have to be just the Michigan Department of Education. It is the ISDs. It is our educational organizations. There are a variety of different ways for us to fill those gaps, but that is something we can do to support these local school districts because they just do not have the capacity that they once had. And let's go back to Follin's research. It's about building capacity. If we want to improve student achievement, you build capacity at the school level, and you will see achievement improve. So, that would be the second thing. The third thing that impacts schools that they have to manage through enrollment decline is really facilities. And I don't think that's our responsibility at this level. That's something that's best handled at the local level through every single community and how they are addressing that. And it's different in every community. Right now, in Wayne County, Taylor just closed one of their two high schools. They're down to one high school now. Livonia, I closed a lot of schools when I was a Superintendent of Livonia, but they've just closed two more elementary schools. Grosse Pointe is going through a pretty painful process right now. Anybody who's closed schools, right, it's no fun. But Grosse Pointe's going through the process right now of reevaluating their facility resources and what their needs are long-term. And in Detroit, very honestly, you know, where they're at, and I give them credit for this, because they're probably overcapacity right now in regards to the number of schools that they've had. But let's not forget the number of schools that they've closed in the last 10 years, number one. And number two, they should be focusing on, do they have a quality teacher in front of their kids? Do they have the curriculum that they need? Are they being trained? Do they have the support that they need? They have to work on student achievement right now. They have to do work on how their kids are doing. We know that, and they know very clearly where their kids are at, where they're, how far they are behind, and what they have to do to catch them up. And that's what their focus has been, and I couldn't support them more in regards to addressing that as opposed to saying we need to do a facility analysis in our local school district. So, that's just an example of how that varies in communities, and I don't think we have a role to play in that, per se. I would say, from a bigger standpoint, we're often asked about consolidation. And when it comes to that, I would have the same response that I just shared with you for the Detroit Public School System. And that is, if you want to do consolidation, there is a significant amount of energy and effort that goes into that. And time, money, resources, it goes into that. That is not, that should not be what our number-one focus is. We know that we're lagging behind other states. We know that we want to be doing better by our kids. We know that we want to be doing better by our poor kids, by our EL kids, by our students with disabilities. We see the gaps. That should be our focus right now as it relates to what we're doing in Michigan to move forward as opposed to other things which may be good ideas, may need to be done at some point in time, but we do have to set priorities, and our priority, one right now, is we don't want to be lagging the rest of the country in regards to student achievement.
Question number four. Please explain your experience with career technical education and include in your response how you would lead the department in developing a systemic approach to CTE that includes access for all interested students?
Yeah, I've had a great deal of experience with CTE programs. The two local school districts that I worked in, Wayne Westland and in Livonia, had two premier centers that were separate facilities that they ran, ran consortiums. A lot of school districts would send kids to the Wayne Westland Ford Vocational Center or the Livonia Career Technical Education Center. And so, I know a lot about those programs, a lot about those services. In fact, we had an agreement with Wayne Westland, even though we both took kids in from our surrounding communities. We also had an agreement with each other because we ran certain programs that they didn't run, and they ran programs that we didn't run. We ran medical assisting, we had CAD CAM, we had graphic design, and at one time, they didn't have that. They have graphic design now. But they had heating and ventilating, and they had some other programs that we didn't have. And so, we said, look, let's share kids. You have kids that want to take heating. We have kids that want to go take heating and ventilating. We don't have the program. You have kids that want to take medical assisting. We have that program. We set up those types of consortiums. In Wayne County, I've learned actually even a lot more since I've been the county superintendent because what we see across the state of Michigan, and remember, I'm the president of the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Districts also, so spent a lot of time with my colleagues across the state of Michigan. And vocational education, from a program standpoint, is all over the place right now. And so, in Wayne County... And so in Wayne County, we have these really good centers, we have consortiums set up, we have a Downriver Consortium also set up. In Detroit, they have multiple, actually, multiple centers. We are very actively involved in supporting the rebirth of the Randolph CTE Center that's gotten a lot of kudos over the last couple of years as a way to get back into good CTE programs for students. And so we worked with them on everything from the curriculum that they were using to how they wanted to set up the school day for their kids. And so, you know, in Wayne County, it's these consortium-type of setups that provide CTE programs and services. In many other areas of the state, they have basically county-run CTE programs. And so Oakland is an example, just north of us, they have a county millage. And what they use that county millage for is to run five CTE centers. And then all of their school systems take part in that. And there are a lot of those types of CTE centers across the state, especially in our smaller areas where the districts are smaller, they're not going to be able to provide those programs in their high school. They have county-wide CTE centers. But it's disparate. And so from a system standpoint, we're not very systemic in regards to our support for CTE in our state. We've got some, I mean, remarkable programs, remarkable programs, really cool things. I had a chance, by the way, the ISDs are now looking at virtual reality for CTE programs. I had a chance to put on the glasses and actually cut metal, virtually, thank God, because they probably wouldn't let me touch the machine. But, you know, that's the kind of technology that's now coming that's going to continue to support CTE opportunities for kids. Maybe they only need to have one welding lab now if they can, if the other kids can do virtual reality. And you still want to have them have the real experience, but I think it's going to be another opportunity moving forward as it relates to CTE. But systemically, we are all over the place. Some counties have vocational millages, some don't. For those that do, when a school district sends a student to that program, they don't have to lose the halftime FTE that would typically pay for that portion of the program. The millage pays for that. And so it's all over the place. So from a system standpoint, providing some equalization would be very helpful to make sure, because, right, this is about access to these programs for all kids. Every child should have an opportunity to access any one of these programs. That ought to be our goal. And so from a system standpoint, if we look at leveling out and providing some equalization as it relates to resources, we're going to be able to provide more opportunities for more students. The other thing that I'd offer is when we think about how in some places the high school loses that FTE, we call the FTE, it's the money, right? It goes over to pay for the vocational program. If we could find a way, because those are priority programs, people are saying, there are jobs there, this is, you know, kids need these opportunities, they need these awareness opportunities to participate in, well, then we have to provide an incentive because there's a significant disincentive right now. If you're a high school principal, and you have 10 students that want to go to the CTE Center over in Wayne Westland, you've got to make the decision that you're going to lose half their funding for that day. And does that mean that now I can't offer the section of French II that keeps some students coming back to our school district? Does that mean that the advanced placement class that we've run for five years no longer can run because I don't have a choice of having two classes that have only 10 to 15 students in them? And so if those programs are important, and I would suggest that they are, those opportunities are very important for students. If we find a way to address that disincentive, you're going to see more students participating in vocational education programs. So that's one thing from a system standpoint that I think we can do, along with the equalization. And last, I would just mention, there are so many resources out there as it relates to career training, apprenticeships, career awareness, job internships. There are so many opportunities out there. If we can help coordinate those for local school districts, it's going to be a significant help for kids. Probably, maybe the most enjoyable thing, I mean, the millage is a pretty big deal in Wayne County. But maybe the most enjoyable thing that I had the chance to start in Wayne County was the Career Counseling Program, we call it Ready to Launch. And what we've done with this program is, first of all, I was the new superintendent in Wayne County, people were coming to me about all of these job apprenticeship programs, internship programs. This business will have kids come over, take the opportunity to participate in a job shadowing. And I'm like, okay, I was the superintendent for, I think, the fifth-largest school system in the state of Michigan. Why didn't I not know about maybe one out of four? That was a, I mean, it just became so apparent to me that there are all these resources out there. And of course, the people that operate these resources, they're trying to push into schools, right? They're making cold calls to principals and superintendents, saying, hey, I've got this really neat program, okay? Now, superintendent's busy. You've got a lot of people saying they've got neat programs. But if we could coordinate all of those resources for our schools and then get them out to their counselors, now the kids would have access to all sorts of programs that they didn't have access to before. When we did that, what we found very quickly was that, as you well know, the counseling ratios in Michigan are not good. We have high counselor-to-student ratios at our high schools. And so the reality was, even though we were putting together this remarkable resource for our counselors, they couldn't get to the kids anyways. And so what we did is we created a program, it's called Ready to Launch. What we did is we were able to get some funding under Section 61, and we were able to hire career counselors that are experts in working with kids in regards to what their game plan was. And I had a chance to share this with those of you that were on the board when you came to visit us at Wayne Reeser last year. And I had a stack of papers where I would read the stories from kids. We would go into an English class, and we would say, okay, 12th grade English class, we're going to let the career counselor come and spend a little time with you to talk about career awareness. And at the end of the class, the career counselor would say, you know, if anybody, any of you want to come down and see me at, you know, sometime, just put a little note on the back of your sheet. They had a little pre-test process. The sheets were amazing. "I need help!" exclamation point. "Here is my schedule. Here's where you can find me, 5th hour. Can you come get me? I want to be a hairdresser or an astronaut." I mean, this is what we were hearing from kids. "But I want someone to talk to me about this." This year, we'll have touched over 2,000 high school seniors who will walk out of our high schools with an action plan, very specifically about what they're going to do when they leave high school. And that kind of effort, and again, we've got all the resources together. Grow Detroit Young's Talent, apprenticeship programs for the carpenters, you know, you name it. We have put all of those resources together, and now they're available, and now we know that if we're working with a kid, based on what their interest is, we can identify what we can do to support them. That's another system thing that we can do to support career technical education and getting kids ready to leave, especially those kids who, you know, don't have a game plan. They're the kid who, you know, I'm not sure what I'm going to do, or, you know, these aren't the kids that have been accepted to Michigan and Michigan State, they're trying to figure out where to go. So it's a significant system thing that we could work on here in our state.
So I just want to let you know, we're almost halfway through, and we're only on question five. And we do want to leave time at the end for additional questions.
Yes.
What if any changes would you recommend to Michigan's school choice policies? How would you lead the department and work with the legislature to make certain that all schools in Michigan that are supported by public taxes are held to the same transparency and accountability requirements?
Let me start by saying that the biggest challenge that we have with our school choice policy is the funding issue. And so it has to do with the impact that it has on local school districts because there are a finite number of students across the state of Michigan. And so what happens is that those students are taking advantage of opportunities through choice or through charter schools. What it does, because of the way the schools are funded, regardless of the concept of, should we provide more opportunities for kids? Okay, let's set that aside because of what's happening with the system, because of the way we fund schools. And so what we're basically creating is a system of winners and losers. And so we have some school districts that are net gainers, we have some districts that are net losers. But we should never have a system set up to where we have 10 students, let's just say 10 students from one school district that want to go to another school district. That's $75,000 for that school district. That's great for those 10 kids, that's okay, maybe that's fine. But the 1,000 kids left behind in the school system shouldn't pay the price because now they have to cut a teacher in order to balance their budget. And so that is the biggest issue when it comes to choice policy in Michigan. I mentioned a weighted formula to address that. If we still, I mean, the bottom line is, if we're going to have more choices and more options, it's going to cost more money. No different than what I just talked about with career education programs. If that's the case, if we're going to have more schools, we're going to have more opportunities, then it's going to cost additional resources, and we have to recognize that and make sure that the funding's there to take care of that. Because we should not have a program where we have a school district that is cutting programs because a small portion of their student body, for maybe all the right reasons, decided to take advantage of another opportunity. And make no mistake about it, we know who this impacts the most. This impacts our poor communities, this impacts our communities where our minorities are at. It's just that simple. Look at the data. We know, and you can look right on down what's happened over time, our largest school district went bankrupt. They were under emergency management, and so they had the ability to do whatever they needed to with the finances, they couldn't keep up with that enrollment decline. And so if you address the issue of enrollment decline, make sure there are no losers in the process, then it's a different story. And so that would be, you know, that's my take on choice. As it relates to changing policy, you know, we're beyond changing policy, I think, at this point in time. Our ability to say that we're going to do something different with schools of choice or with charter schools, you know, I don't think that's in the purview, at least in the landscape that I see politically. And so what do, you know, what can we do? I mean, there's still, we can do this other piece to make sure there are no losers through the process. And we can, as it relates to charter schools, you know, I know one portion of the question was, you know, should they have the same transparency requirements? I don't know why not. I can't think of a good reason why they shouldn't have to follow the same transparency rules that a local school district does in regards to posting salaries and financial data, et cetera. That should, that just, it should be. And the last thing I would add is, from an authorization standpoint, I think we need to continue to make sure that we have good and active authorizers. You know, the way that we set up the system here in Michigan, we have 300 new school systems. And so, I mean, and really, every single charter school is a new school system. And so, and, you know, they have scale issues too, right? No different than what I was talking about before. They have scale issues, they don't have a curriculum department, they don't have a pupil accounting expert. And so those authorizers really need to be active and involved in regards to what's going on in their charter school and making sure that it's quality education that's going on, and they have the support services that they need to run their school.
Thank you. The Michigan Legislature passed a third-grade reading bill which includes retaining students who fail to adequately pass a standardized test. What are your thoughts on this law, and how can the Michigan Department of Education assist local school districts with the impact of this law?
So, first of all, there are some really good components of the third-grade reading law. And so the concept that we need to, first of all, work with children as they're getting to that important third grade to make sure that they're reading at grade level. And having assessments in place that will allow us to do that, and to make sure that the teachers have the supports that they need, so when they identify students that are struggling, that they'll have the interventions in place to be able to support those students. And that's part of the law. They talk about instructional coaches as being a model that needs to be set up as a support for local school districts. That's part of the law. There's a parent component that's part of the law where parents have to be notified and be part of the plan as the students are working through this process of improvement. And again, every student that is identified, they have to have a specific improvement plan in place to move them along. And so those are all good things. Now, there are some resource issues related to that. I would suggest that there are other states that have done a better job in regards to funding third-grade initiatives compared to Michigan. I think we're moving in the right direction. The School Finance Research Collaborative certainly addresses it. But I think we, you know, we're in a position there that we could do a better job of providing support for those services and making sure that those students are going through the process. But above and beyond that, there is one component of it that I believe is an issue, and that is the retention component of that. It's, we don't have any research, at least the research that I've seen, and there's a lot of research that would basically say retaining students will not help them. In fact, in many cases, it will hurt them. There's research that shows as they trace kids through their educational career, they're more likely to drop out of school, they're more likely to not be successful. And so retention as a component of the third-grade bill, I think, is our significant issue. Not just, and not just for that, but also from just an implementation standpoint. So the process of parent notification, you know, first of all, getting the test results the last time to see if they actually met the state's standards. If they didn't, then notifying the parents, then looking at potential ways to opt out of the retention opportunity. It's significant. Who does this impact? This impacts our poorer communities, our minority communities, our communities that have larger EL populations. They're the ones that are going to have the classrooms, that they're going to have that much more work to do as it relates to dealing with this part of the law. And so I only have to, you know, give you one example. If you would, if you could imagine a class in Northville where maybe they're dealing with three or four third graders, and you're dealing with a class in E-course that may be dealing with 22 or 23 third graders. You think about the burden that it is in regards to go through what the bureaucracy outlines related to retention. And so we have to, some way, somehow, provide support to those local school districts in order to do that work. At Wayne Reeser, we put together a very comprehensive document. We brought together experts, we brought together teachers and curriculum directors from throughout the county, brought them in, and actually developed a very detailed manual that provides support for local school districts every step of the way, what the law says, what you need to do, sample letters to parents. We really helped them walk through this bureaucracy piece. And that's, I think, one thing that we can do to support our local schools. Again, this is the Michigan Department of Education, working with all of the entities across the state of Michigan to find best practices. We've presented this particular document across the state, we have it on our website, anybody can use it. But it's those kinds of resources. I know the Michigan Department of Education's been very active in regards to trying to put together processes and help for local school districts as they get ready next year to implement this law. So, really good components of it. School Finance Research Collaborative really works towards providing the resources to help us make sure that what the law says can be done. But there are really, really good components that we should be doing for kids. I mean, if we want kids to read a third grade, right, that should be one of our major measurements, of course it is. If we want that to happen, the work that's outlined in this law really are the kinds of steps that will get us there.
We continue to hear from districts that they struggle to find certified teachers to hire for existing vacancies. If you are hired as the next state superintendent, what actionable steps would you take to increase teacher attraction and improve teacher retention in Michigan?
Well, as I think I mentioned last time, this is our biggest issue. The picture in Michigan is bleak. This has to be a priority for us. If we believe that we have to have a quality teacher in front of kids, we have to retain and attract talent. I think a place for us to start is the survey that was completed by Michigan Launch. I'm a part of that group. Over, I think it was 17,000 educators responded to the survey, gave us some pretty helpful feedback, very interesting. I mean, basically, what they said was, we love our jobs, we like being teachers, but we are disconnected with the bureaucracy in the state of Michigan, whether that's the legislature, whether that's the education bureaucracy. It's not working for us. We feel that it's a punitive system, and we would not recommend others to join the profession. I mean, that's the feedback that we got from teachers when we asked them, you know, where are we at as it relates to this? So we have to address that. And if we're talking about retention, we have to address that. And so, you know, I like to use the research of Gallup, who has looked at employee engagement in every sector of organization anywhere, including education. And what they say is pretty common sense. They say, basically, people want to make sure they know specifically what they're supposed to do when they come to work. This is going to tie into a question that comes up in a minute about a lot of change, and what can we do to stem the tide of change? But they want to know what's expected of them when they come to work. They want to have the resources that they need to be successful. They want to know that someone's talking to them about their job performance, and they want to know that their voice is heard. And that's what the Gallup research says. They've tested millions of people in thousands of organizations. It's pretty common sense, it's what Fulham talks about in regards to building capacity. It's pretty common sense, it's what Folen talks about in regards to building capacity, and it's what the teacher survey says. And so if we start working on those components for our teachers, not change the rules on them every year, not be so punitive in regards to how we deal with accountability, provide them the resources so they feel like they can be successful, not getting burned out. If we can do those things, teachers are going to, I think, go back to telling their kids, their neighbors, their friends, this is a good profession. It's a good and worthy profession. And so I think that's a place where we can grow. I think when it comes to attraction, we have to look out of the box, you know. If you want to be a teacher, we have got the number one college of education in the country here, in the state of Michigan. Michigan State University is the number one college of ed, has been ranked at for many years. Gotta go to school five years there, so you're gonna write a check for $100,000 to get through school, to get a job for $38,000. My kids went to Michigan State University. They went four years, and they got jobs that paid more than $38,000. And so that's a challenge for us that we have to sort out and think about as a system. There are a variety of programs to start to create more interest down in our area that I'm excited about, that I think are models. Down in Dearborn, they're doing an early college. And so you hear about the early colleges for a variety of different professions, but we have, they're creating an early college for teachers. Wayne State's got a great program down there for career awareness for high school students to get them involved. And we also have, in Detroit, a residency program that the Detroit Public School Systems is creating with Merry Grove. All great potential models in regards to what we can do to attract teachers. And I would just add one more. I actually wrote out a potential plan that I pitched to the Detroit Promise a couple of years ago. You guys probably know about the Detroit Promise, it's the program that they have, that if a student has a certain grade level, they're gonna get their first two years of college paid for. And so I pitched an idea to say, you know, we need, what we know about kids, we know about a lot of kids when they go into education, is they like to go back and teach in their hometown. We see that, we see that quite regularly. They love to go back and teach in their hometown. And so we know that we've got an issue, especially when we look at this issue, in our poor communities, and our communities that are economically disadvantaged, in our communities that are, that have a higher minority balance. It's a harder issue, or a harder, they've got bigger issues when it comes to finding teachers. And so if we can find high school kids and talk to them and say, "You know what? Here's the deal. Here's the game plan. In five years, you're gonna come out, you're gonna make this much money, you gotta make a commitment to stay here for five years, you're gonna be in your home community supporting what you care about here, and we're gonna pay for your college. We're gonna get that taken care of for you." It's one idea, but it's those kinds of, I think, out-of-the-box thinking types of ideas that we're gonna have to look at if we're gonna try, if we're gonna, if we're gonna, number one, attract more people into the profession, and especially in the communities where they need them the most. The research is clear. Even in our, a grade teacher is needed in every classroom, but the level of impact that they have in our poor communities is significantly larger. And so if we're looking at the handful of things that we can do, getting back to question one and two, this is gigantic.
Revolving door of education reform seems to be a constant in Michigan. These ongoing reforms change the education targets and directions for our schools, districts, and Department of Ed, as well as impede our ability to create continuity of focus, efforts, and actions. Briefly, what role do you see the state superintendent taking to stop this turning of change?
I think a significant role. You know, Michigan Department of Education has a lot of rules and regulations, first and foremost. And so we have an opportunity internally to look at how, you know, what are those rules? I mean, we have a variety of state and federal requirements. But what are those rules? We have a lot of reports that are sent to the State Department. Is every single report needed? Can we streamline? What can we do to get out of the way of school districts who are doing the right work? I think we have the opportunity to do that when we look at this. Every single department within MDE has a big responsibility. Oversight, you know, a lot of times monitoring funds, et cetera. But they work in silos to some extent, they really do. And so unintentionally, they can trip over each other, and when you're down at a local school level, trying to sort all that out, it can be problematic. And so we can work on that here at the state level. And certainly, the bully pulpit of the state Board of Education and of the state superintendent as it relates to working with legislators is another place that we can work to say, "Look, you know, we need to slow down the change in local schools, and let's work on what we focus on." I think that's part and parcel of having a very proactive plan. I mean, if we can focus on the top 10 and 10, and the ideas that are identified in there, and start to work on the components under the School Finance Research Collaborative, that's our focus, and we need to try to keep the rest of the noise away. And so I think we have an opportunity, you know, the department has an opportunity to always work on doing a better job with that, and being more cognizant of how it's more value-add as opposed to compliance.
It is becoming more commonplace for parents to choose to opt their children out of various educational requirements such as standardized testing. As state superintendent, how would you balance the rights of parents versus the responsibility of the state in regard to compliance?
Well, first and foremost, I am a strong believer in the rights of parents. They are, I don't have to explain that. Parents' rights should be respected and highly valued. I felt, when I was in a local school district, that we handled this pretty well, because we do have these requirements. And in some cases, we want the information that we're collecting. So I'll just take the state assessment as the example. And, you know, we've had, over the last few years, especially a few years ago, parents that have just said, "Okay, enough testing, we're done. Our kid's out, we're not gonna do it anymore." And we know why parents are saying that. And so we really felt, whether it was the assessment, or some other activity or program that we were asking our kids to participate in, we took the response, we felt that it was our responsibility to share with parents why it was important for kids to be involved. And so we worked very hard, for example, on the state test, to say, "Look, we need the state data. We need to know how our kids are doing compared to the benchmarks that have been set by the state of Michigan. This is data that we use in regards to altering our instruction. This gives us our map in regards to how we're doing, not just with all of our kids, but with our subgroup of kids. You know, do we have subgroup issues? Well, if all the kids aren't taking the tests, then we don't have the data that we need." And so that was a, that was a big communication piece for us when we worked with parents on this. And I think that was our responsibility to do that. And I think it's our responsibility, for anything that we're saying, "We want kids to participate in this," it's our responsibility to say why. And so, having said all of that, at the end of the day, though, we did have a balance. And we would make our case, and we would present a strong case, and we would encourage parents to participate. But at the end of the day, if mom and dad said, "Nope, my kid's not participating in this," we honored that. And I, I'm a strong believer in parental rights, and believe that that's, that's the appropriate way to balance that.
Please discuss your experience in implementing technology in the classroom and at the school or district level. What are the advantages and disadvantages of using technology for teaching and learning? What about for taking standardized tests?
So, let me start with the advantages and disadvantages before I talk about my experiences. And so there are significant advantages in having technology available to students and into classrooms. What we have at the fingertips of teachers today, 20 years ago, we would've thought never would have existed. You know, we can, we can have, we can have a class of social studies students talking to a class halfway across the world. We have students that, through an app, through a program, can have someone show them exactly how to walk through a math computation, to show them how to do a science experiment. I mean, it's all at our fingertips. And so it's, I think it's a necessity if we want to get the very best out of our teachers, to make sure that they have those resources and that they're trained to use them. Having said that, I'm a firm believer that you still need to have a school and a teacher. At the end of the day, it is that human interaction that, that support that only a teacher can provide, those growth opportunities for students, and of course, they're inside the classroom and outside the classroom. Those experiences have to happen between, between adults and kids, kids and kids. That can't go away. So I see, I see technology as a significant tool for teachers. That's the way I see it. But it does not replace teachers, nor is it the be-all, end-all in regards to, this is going to solve our issues. But it is a remarkable, it is a remarkable tool, and I've been involved my entire career in the 90s. We passed a technology bond issue in our local community, and I had the opportunity to work with a great team underneath me to implement that technology. And I remember how painful it was to get teachers to use email. That's where we started, and it doesn't seem that long ago. It doesn't seem that long ago to me. But literally, you know, they had the Macs. Remember the Macs? With the orange, you get the orange ones, you get the blue ones, right? You had the Macs in the classroom, and the teachers were trying to figure it out, and that's where we were at just 25 years ago. And so compare that to where we're at now with the most recent bond issue that I was involved with in our local school district, where it was basically outfitting every class with overhead projector, a computer that's hooked to the internet, miscellaneous portable resources for students to use in their daily lessons. It's a completely different world in regards to the resources that are available. What I would say is not different, though, is still where teachers are in regards to their abilities to use the resources. And so it might've been email in 1995, and today it might be, you know, "I'm not sure how to use this particular app to support students with this particular issue." Teachers need help in regards to how to best use technology in the classroom. It's a tool. It's no different than giving them a curriculum. And so if you give them a curriculum, they have to be trained on it, they have to know how to best use it with kids. It's the same with technology. And so we actually have a small department at Wayne Resa that provides resources to our local school districts to support them, support teachers using technology in their classroom. And it's just gonna continue to grow from here. I gave you the virtual reality example. The resources that are here today are a little different five years from now, we know that much. But I believe this much, there's still gonna be a teacher in that classroom, working with kids, and they're gonna need support to make sure that whatever the technology is, they're able to best use it.
So, just so you know, we have about 30 minutes left.
Okay.
Okay. This is a long one, so. So Michigan is one of the few states that supports special needs students from birth to age 26, and is also challenged with inadequate resources from the federal and state governments to maintain current programs and meet the increasing needs of students identified with disabilities. How would you lead the department in making certain these children and young adults receive services they require and have better opportunities once they have left the public school system? That's one question. What should the department's role? What should be the department's role in improving special ed education and the complaint due process procedures? Finally, would you support reinstating a parent's right to appeal a decision made by MDE's Office of Special Education? Why or why not?
So, actually, I think there's a component of the first piece, which is really, what are we gonna do to make sure that we're assuring services to all students? And I certainly am a supporter of the program that we have here in the state of Michigan, which is Zero to 26. It's expensive, it means a lot more resources, but if you've ever talked to a parent who has a child that is 26, getting ready to leave the system, you know the value that that additional time has been for that particular family. If you've ever been to a career program graduation for students that are 26, leaving our, leaving our system, I mean, if you don't walk out of there with a lump in your throat, or a tear in your eye, I, you have no feeling. I mean, it's remarkable. And it is a testament, though, of those services that were provided for those kids over that period of time, and the fact that parents really need that support, and those kids really need those life skills if they're gonna be successful. So, not only is it, is it a good deal for the kid, it's a great deal for the families, it's also a great deal for our communities. These are members of our community, and this is their chance to be successful. And so I'm a supporter of Zero to 26. The State Department has a significant role in regards to monitoring and assuring that there's a appropriate level of special education program in service in our schools. And not only do they have those responsibilities, I believe they have a responsibility to get actively involved in what's going on locally in those schools. And I'll just give one example. Last Friday, we were in Detroit. It was myself, it was Nikolai Vidi, he's a deputy superintendent, and Scott Knechnic from here at the Michigan Department of Education, Terry Chapman, and John Andriak. And we were all around the table, and our job really that day was just to listen and find out where they think they're at with their special education services, what they're doing, what they see their priorities being, and how they're moving forward on them. And that conversation, we learned so much in regards to the programs that they have in place, how the kids are being serviced, where their challenges are. You know, I mean, if you look at just data, they're way behind in regards to identifying students. They're behind. You talk to them, and it's about teacher retention and attraction. They don't have enough social workers, counselors, psychologists to do the evaluations. I have one school district where the special education director, who's a psychologist, is doing evals on kids. And so unless you dig in and really talk to people on the ground about the work that they're doing, what their plan is, we really can't help them be better. And so I think we've got a significant responsibility from oversight, but we also have a significant responsibility to say, "What are the real problems out there, and what can we do to support school districts to provide better programs?" That's the assurance of service. As it relates to what happens after they leave us, there are a variety of different resources that are available, that I'm aware of, that I've become aware of. I go, I'm a regular attendant at the Parent Advisory Council meetings. Every county has to have a special education parent advisory council. And so I go to ours. And a lot of the presentations for parents are really, "What's the game plan for my child after they leave?" And so they'll have different organizations and resources coming in and talking about the services and the programs that are available. And so from a system standpoint, similar to what I talked about with the career education program, you know, I, I didn't know about all the opportunities that were out there for kids. I don't think parents know about all the opportunities that are out there for their students. And so if we could inventory those resources and find ways to get those to parents, because not every parent can make a parent advisory council committee. And the truth of the matter is, you know, there's, you know, I think I said 36,000 IAPs, you know, there's maybe 50 parents that come. And they're busy, they've got a lot on their plate, a lot going on. And so what can we do to get those resources to parents, number one? So we're at least taking advantage of what we have today, and making sure that they're all aware of the different opportunities. Separate from that, I think working, doing outreach with our, regular outreach with our business community is another way to, to increase the opportunities for students. And a lot of times, it just has to do with exposure and recognition of opportunity that businesses need to see. And once they're in, my experience has been they're all in. And so I think that's an area that we could also provide additional focus towards. As it relates to the rules, I know that we've made pretty significant changes to, I don't know if it's significant, we made changes to the whole complaint due process procedures just a couple of years ago. And so here in the department, there are a variety of changes that were made that impacted the ISD's local school districts. And, and so that was looked at just recently, but I think, similar to what I talked about in regards to assuring services, I think for us to continue to improve those, that process for everybody involved, which is the question, I think we have to have just ongoing, regular dialogue. And so we made significant changes just a couple of years ago. But are those significant changes working? Are they working for parents? Are they working for the schools? There are different components there. So I think having a systematic, a systemic process in place to where we're doing regular checks on how the rules are working for parents and for, and for our educators in the schools. And the more we can, we can work together on that, I think we're gonna be able to continually improve those services. And that ties into the last piece, which is really this.
The appeal.
Yeah, the appeal process piece. So, yeah, very honestly, that piece I wasn't as familiar with, because I know that when the process is exhausted through, through the complaint process, then you have due process. But due process is very expensive.
Right.
Yes. And so the one thing, I think I may have mentioned this last time too, but the one thing that we really, that I would love to see, and I don't know if it's possible, but I would love to see that process simplified and short. It takes too long to get, to get, I mean, students are, they're out there. Students are out there waiting for their determination of what their placement might be, or what services they're gonna receive. And as that's happening, as this process is happening, they're waiting. And I have seen many a case. And I have seen many a case, being a local superintendent and now at the county, where parents have waited a long time. Schools have waited a long time for an answer in regards to what's going to happen with that. Have you guys ever looked at the process? Michelle, I'm sure you have. But the process is significant. I mean, it is, I mean, you know, it's just thick. I mean, how could that not be overwhelming for parents? And I don't care, you know, sophisticated parents struggle with the process. Now, let's talk about parents that, you know, are working two jobs and are trying to balance things out at home. You know, I mean, it's overwhelming.
Or don't speak the language.
Yes, yes. I have a rule at our meetings that if we use more than four acronyms when we're talking about special education, I'm going to shut down. I just tell them, I'm done. I can't take anymore if you use four acronyms. We have to talk, we have to talk about what's, you know, what's going on here as opposed to, you know, and there is a vernacular around it that's quite remarkable. So I'd love to see the process shortened and simplified. It's going to be less expensive for everybody, but more importantly, it's going to get the kid the service that they need quicker.
The state superintendent reports directly to the state board of education and is also considered a member of the governor's cabinet. How do you envision serving in both of these roles, and what happens when there is conflict between the SBE and the executive office?
Yeah, and I'll be quick on this particular one. I just think that if we have a process, we collectively have a process, working together to set goals at the beginning of the year, the board of education and the state superintendent, we sit down at the beginning of the year, and we say, here's our goals for next year. Here are the five things that we're working on. Here are the 10 things that we are going to work on next year. And we have a clear plan of what that is. That's going to put us in a position to have a proactive approach to how we're going to do our work. And I would suggest that we ask the governor's office for feedback. What are your goals? What are your priority issues for next year? What is your, what are your policy agenda items for education? And let's see how that fits into the goals that we've set in regards to doing the work here in the department. So that way, we're working in concert together. We are on the same page. Or if we're not on the same page, we know it up front. And I think that provides an opportunity for us to move things forward, because if the governor's office and the Michigan Department of Education, state board are working together, it's just, we're going to move, we're going to move education further in our state than if we're working apart. Now, as it relates to, when you think about any particular struggles or differences, that's going to happen. I mean, it's going to happen. So let's find our common areas. I think Brian Wiston was a master at this. He was, he was good at it. And so he's given us the model in regards to how to do this work with the executive administration. And if we're upfront with, and we have good relationships, I think no matter what, we will, we'll be fine. I think I'm in a great position for that right now, because I know people in the governor's office. And it's not going to be rebuilding relationships. It's going to be, we're in a position to walk over, have the conversation, deal with the issue, and probably going to be on the same page, more than we're not on the same page. At the end of the day, though, we're going to do what we believe is right for kids.
The Michigan Department of Education and State Board created a federally approved accountability system and an accompanying parent dashboard. During the 2018 lame duck session, the legislature passed a second accountability system referred to as A through F, which will result in the state having two separate and at times contradictory accountability systems. What are your thoughts on these systems? How would you plan to implement the A through F system? Should the A through F system replace the current federally approved accountability plan?
So let me recognize all of you for stepping out loudly and boldly at the beginning, saying that you did not support the proposal that was made by the state board of education in December. In fact, I have a vivid recollection of the first, one of the first press releases that came out relating to that. And it was the state board of education and the tri-county alliance, which I've been actively involved with for several years, that were out in front saying, this is wrong. And so we should not have an ADF system. I don't believe, I believe that what the department has created with the index system and with the accountability system is really good. The index system takes in all the components of ESSA, meets those requirements. I don't believe it's nearly as punitive as other index systems that we see in other places. And so I thought that was very well done, got a lot of input when that was put together. And the parent accountability dashboards, I mean, it's all there. I mean, if you're a parent and you want to go and find out about a school, proficiency, growth, attendance, the, I think they've got other data on there. Not only data for the school on there, but they've got it compared to the state averages, and then they've got it compared to similar school districts across, you know, that are similar to your school. I mean, it is simple, it is straightforward, it's the information by and large that parents will want, at least off the bat. Because, you know, my suggestion always is to parents, you know, after you look at that stuff, go visit the school. Go talk to the principal. Walk around the building and see what it feels like. And that's going to tell you what a real, you know, what school's like. But the accountability dashboard that was put together, I think, is excellent. And so, and so I'm a supporter of that. I do not think that that should be replaced. What I'd rather see happen is, if at all possible, have the, have the department take the components of the new law that we have to comply with and have them fit our accountability system if we can do it that way. I think our ability, the reality of policy right now, I think our chances of going back and getting that revoked through the legislature, which is how that would have to happen, I don't know how that would happen. And so if we had an opportunity, we ought to jump on it. But assuming that can't happen, we've got a responsibility. Let's add another complication to it, and that is the Detroit Public School System has their own accountability system that was foisted on them when the law was passed. And so another complication in that whole process. The more we can keep in place what we have is where I would like to see, where I think we should go.
Okay, so we have one final question, and Marilyn will pick up any of the note cards that we have in, while we're doing that. The final question is, why should we hire you to be Michigan's next state superintendent?
Yes, yeah, well, again, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today. And it's humbling to go be here, it's humbling to go through this process without a question. And this is my passion, this is the work of my career. That's why I'm sitting before you. It's why I went to Wayne Risa. I, you know, Livonia's a great place to work, and they loved me there, and I loved to work there. It was my hometown, but I wanted to do something different, I wanted to have a bigger impact. And so I went to Wayne County Risa and had the opportunity to do that the last four years. I think we've gotten a lot done. Now I've got the opportunity to do that at a statewide level, and that's why I'm here. That's my, that is my motivation to be sitting in front of you. And so the education system has been good to me, and I'm here from very humble beginnings. My children have benefited from the current existing system, but I know that not all children are benefiting from our system as we sit here today. And I believe that we have the roadmap to move us forward. It's here. The top 10, a top 10 and 10, a lot of work went into that. The School Finance Research Collaborative is a roadmap. It is the single most important policy issue that I've seen that can change how we deal with equity in this state, period. Certainly in my career. There is not, this is a generational opportunity for us. If we take the findings of that over time and start to implement that and recognize that we're going to fund our schools and we're going to provide resources to our schools, our schools are going to look like schools that meet the needs of the kids that are there in no other, and in no other way. That's going to have, it literally is an opportunity for a generational, a generational change for our school system. And I, and this is uncomfortable for every one of our candidates, I don't like to sit here and brag about myself, and that's what I've had to do on two different occasions, but that's, you know, that's part and parcel of the process. But I do believe, without a question, that if we want to focus on attracting and retaining teachers, getting the resources that they need, using the resources and the roadmaps that we've created, I'm the person that can bring it forward. I don't believe there's going to be anyone else that you're going to find that are going to have more contacts with the people that are pushing this particular effort and agenda in the state. Whether it's the business community, whether it's labor, whether it's our educational organizations, whether it's the state department, superintendents across the state of Michigan, I think I'm in a position with all of those organizations to where they don't have to get to know Randy, they don't have to know what he believes in, they don't have to know what he stands for. They can work arm in arm, and we can move this forward together. There are a variety of initiatives that are going on that are starting that work. School Finance Research Collaborative being one, Launch Michigan being another, but there are a variety of other efforts that are also going on within our school communities. And I believe that I'm as well-connected with all of those pieces as anybody that you are going to talk to. And if that's the direction of our state, and if that's how we're going to move forward, I think I'm well-positioned. I think I've got a history and a clear track record of getting things done every place I've worked. And I am, I am all in to do that work and make that happen. So thank you again for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you. And I'm sorry I was a little bit long-winded. I know you have questions, and I'm going to, I'll do the best I can to get to some of your questions.
Cassandra, I put my name, just in case you can't read my writing, I would like to ask.
Okay, thank you. When you say, "We did it together," who are you talking about? Who was involved? What role did they play? Did you do most of the talking? Did you hire from outside to conduct the conversation?
Okay, so maybe someone can help me with that, because I'm trying to, what was the "we"? What did we do together?
Okay, okay. What I want to know more about your collaborative style. So when you talk about, you kept saying, "We worked together, we did this." I want you to tell us more about your collaborative style, your relationship building. Did you hire somebody from another state to come and do your work? Or did all, we have the resources here, you took care of it?
Yeah, no, I'm a get-your-hands-dirty kind of guy. I think if you would talk to the people that have worked for me, they would say that Randy would never ask us to do something that he wouldn't do himself. And so when it's "we," it's the team. And so the team might be a group of superintendents in Wayne County. It might be a group of state superintendents working on a particular project. It might be our team at Wayne Risa working on the work that we do. But that is what the "we" is. I think one of my most, one of my biggest strengths is the ability to be able to motivate people based on my sincerity about the work that they're doing and my belief in them. And so we are in this together, I'm not better than them, we are, we are all pitching in. I'll take, I'll take the arrows, that's not a problem. And I'll provide the leadership. But at the end of the day, it's all of us together that moves us forward.
So we've heard some feedback or concerns related to the Japanese, I think it's the Japanese immersion charter school.
Yes.
Do you want to talk about what happened with that school?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I think you all received a correspondence from the board president in Livonia that provided some background regarding that. That school, actually, I love that school, and I love that program. We created a Japanese immersion program, and it's a really cool school. It's half a day you're immersed in English, and a half a day you're immersed in Japanese. And so it's not like you're going down to a class, or you're taking a couple of hours. It's literally immersion. And so, and the model for the school was to have half American students and half Japanese students in the program. Great concept. We worked on it with a person who was renting space from us in our school district. He had a Japanese preschool program. And he said, "Randy, I've got this great idea for school, and, you know, we would love to partner with you on this, and, you know, how can we do this?" And we began to talk about it. I talked about providing a consortium to do that, because several of the students would come from outside of our school district, especially our Japanese populations. We're in Novi, West Bloomfield, Ann Arbor. And so when we put this together, we tried that first, it didn't work. Then we actually went to Wayne Risa, and we said, "Hey, you guys charter schools, would you be willing to set up a charter for this so we can get schools from outside of our population? We just didn't want to do this, not in agreement with our surrounding districts." So we said, "Could we set up a charter school to do this?" And they said, "Well, Randy, we're not in the process of taking on new charters right now, but you could charter a school." And so I was the third school district in the state of Michigan that actually chartered a school. And we set this program up for the purpose to serve these students in this manner. We started with 13 students. The person who brought this program to me worked for free for a year, actually for multiple years, to get this up and running. But what happened was, after several years, the board at that time for the school and the lead manager, the guy who created the school and who was running the school, they, the issues were irconcilable. They could not resolve their differences, who was going to run the school, who was going to be in charge. They had some significant management issues in regards to just managing it, not anything wrong, just, they just didn't have the competencies and the background to do that. We tried to provide them background information to do that. But at the end of the day, what we saw was going to happen was, the school was either going to dissolve, or we were going to have to step in. And so on behalf of the kids, in that program, we stepped in. And for the people that had control of the program, they were not very happy about that. And we recognized that. It was a tough decision for our school board, it was a unanimous decision. They supported our decision all along the way, because we knew, and at the end of the day, the school was going to survive, and these kids were going to be able to have this opportunity. And so as we sit here today, the school is adding a sixth grade, 250 strong, they're doing renovations to the building, and it's absolutely flourishing. And to me, I don't care what's on the side of the building, whether it says academy or whether it says school, the bottom line is a wonderful program for kids, and we're very proud.
Thank you. Creativity is expected to be even more important in the future. How can our education system, as Yang Zhao says, kill creativity less successfully?
Kill creativity less successfully? I think this gets into Fulon's work. It's about building capacity in our schools and building capacity in the people that are doing the work. It's our principals and our teachers that are doing the work in the buildings, and they're the ones that we have to continually work with to build capacity and build their talents. It is, research says, single-handedly the most impactful thing we can do, and it is the most impactful thing we can do in our poor communities. And so if we work on that and allow them to not be tied into rules, regulations, ideals, but actually working on the craft of what they're doing in their classrooms, teacher collaborative inquiry is the number one impact on student achievement. It's outlined by Hattie, and there's nothing even close to it. And I believe that's what that gets at, and the way to do that is, in some ways, get out of the way from a regulation standpoint. But in other ways, support them in regards to working together and having the time that they need, the resources that they need, and the learning process to do that. I remember we, in Livonia, implemented a program where we sent the kids home early, and we had collaborative time for teachers. It was a disaster. Why? Because we didn't train the teachers on how to do it. We did not provide them the background that they needed even to do that collaborative inquiry. And so I believe that's what, that's what the point of that work is, and it ties directly into what we hear from what I think are the right drivers identified by Fulon, other researchers, Hattie, and really what we heard from teachers in the survey.
I'm going to try to read it. Pam, will you want to ask your question?
Let me just try to read it myself. You mentioned addressing lagging, you mentioned that you would like to make sure that you address lagging achievement of populations. And a question that I have, because I thought I heard you use the two interchangeably, do you see the path forward in doing the same for minority children as you do for low-income children? And if not, differentiate how you would do so for each subpopulation?
There actually is a difference, and it has to do with what students bring to them when they come to school every day. One of the things that we get requested to do at Wayne Risa quite regularly with teachers is to work with them, with the students that are coming to them. And so, as you can imagine, in a place like Livonia, there are a lot of white teachers, and there are African-American students coming to school. And so those teachers are saying, what do I need to know? What can I learn in regards to the background and the learnings that that student's bringing to us that will help me better serve those students? Tomorrow morning, I mean, the work never stops, right? Tomorrow morning, I'll be at a breakfast that is kicking off a three-day conference here in Detroit. It's called the Coalition of Educators to Educate Boys of Color. And that is different than just looking at the needs of students that are economically disadvantaged. It's very specific in regards to that work. We have eight presenters that are involved at Wayne Risa with the conference. I think we have 22 people going. I'll be there with leadership from Skilman Foundation and other organizations across Detroit, because we all want to get behind this work and show that leaders are supporting this. And so... And so, without a question, whomever is coming to us, they're coming to us with a culture and a background that the better we know, the better we can serve them.
So we're about out of time. I have two more questions, I'll just read them very briefly, and if you want to address them.
I'm ready.
You are welcome to. Okay. The first one is, are you passionate about students? Please give a specific time when you impacted the life of a student.
Wow, absolutely. You know, I still go back, as I speak to Livonia, to a young man who was, he's legally blind, he's in our visually impaired program. And he was in trouble one day with the principal. And the principal said, "You know what, you know, I'm not getting through to you, I think I'm going to have to have my boss come." Well, I happened to be going to the school for a different reason. And I came, and he found out I was the boss's boss, and he was really impressed with that. So this was my new best friend, and I would go to his classroom, pull him aside, we would read together. And I told the class, I said, "Look, you know, you know what," class of third graders, "you know what, you know, one of my big jobs is, I call off school. I'm the snow day guy." Whoa, right? The kids are all going crazy. Whoa, Randy, you know. Yes, yes. And guess who's going to help me? Guess who's going to help me call snow days this year? And there he was, sitting with me. And wonderful young man, and to this day, we still stay in touch.
And then finally, you talk about supporting teachers. How does the department support this, when teachers in some districts feel they are forced to abort quality teaching in order to focus on teaching to the test?
Yeah, I mean, this gets right back into Fulon's work. It's not about the test. The actual results of the test will happen, if you put in the right processes in place. The results will happen. It's, I don't know if you guys remember John Wooden, the old coach at UCLA, right?
Of course.
10, 12, everybody knows, right? 12 championships, I don't know. His issue was, I am not talking, I'm not going to talk to you about the score of the game, I'm going to talk to you about what's going on every single play out on the court. He was about the process, and then he felt that the results would come out of that. And that is what we ought to be looking at as it relates to, it shouldn't be this, you know, oh my gosh, I have to, I have to get through this curriculum, I have to do this. It should be, what are we doing to grow the ability of teachers in regards to them being successful with kids in classrooms? It is, you guys have heard me now 10 times, it is the factor that will impact student achievement. If we focus on getting good teachers in front of kids, if we focus on getting them the right training and providing them the resources, we are going to see growth in student achievement. It is there. The research says it, it's in the top 10 and 10, it's in the SFRC, it's ready to roll. That's what has to happen. And that doesn't mean that we're teaching to the test, it means that we're growing teachers to be the very best that they can be, based on their collective work with their colleagues. Do they look at data? Absolutely they do. They have to look at it. But it's not from a system standpoint of punitive, it's from a standpoint of how are our kids doing?
Okay, that is it for us. Thank you so much for coming and joining us today. And we appreciate you being here.
Okay, thank you.